Mr. Chair and Board Members, the purpose of the meeting this evening is to consider the adoption of the real estate tax rate and proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. As you're well aware, we made a presentation in early March and provided a proposed budget for your consideration. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion about that proposed budget since then, and I know the schools have indicated a desire to have the penny and a half that was recommended for capital be shifted to operations. So I know that's something that the board has considered and wants to talk about this evening. I know there may be some other things that the board wishes to discuss as well. And at this time, Mr. Chair, I'll recognize you, and I know that there may be some comments from other board members before you move forward with any motions this evening.
Thank you, Greg. We'll open the floor up for discussion now, and we'll start with Supervisor Tuck.
Well, I'll start off with the 89 cent tax rate. When I got on the board, passports had gone backwards in my mind. We utilize the reassessments as a means of dealing with inflation. It is directly tied with the inflation rates. As property rates go up and cost of living goes up, so there's no doubt in my mind that the 89 cent tax rate is the right thing to do. I have, I started off with the county administration's proposed budget. I thought about it, and I thought, well, maybe we can go ahead and give all of it to the operations. And that was my initial reaction. There was quite a bit of discussion at that point in time about redistricting, and I heard not lots of things about crises in the Christiansburg Strand, and it was a crisis situation. I started then looking back, going back all the way to 2016 and 2017, reviewing the meetings that took place and how we talked about that we should do some remodeling. There were several board members that wanted to look at remodeling versus rebuilding. And we got some estimates, and they were much higher than the estimates that we're looking at today. To be fair, these estimates are, those were for larger expansions, but they included the old Christiansburg Middle School site. And I also then heard the presentation about the mobile units, and while they're nice mobile units, being installed potentially at Harding Avenue. The first number I heard was 1.4 million. I believe that's been reduced now. A five-year lease at $65,000 a year with $500,000 being set aside to set it up and another $50,000 to remove it. I do think that we need to start saving, and I meant what was quoted in the paper. We, the kids in the mobile units has been my goal to get them out. And that's Blacksburg kids, that's Christiansburg kids, that's all the kids. And while we're a growing district, sometimes mobile units are inevitable. It happens. But I want to make sure that we start setting aside money for that. I started going through the budget, looking, and I was very happy with some of the things that recently come from the school administration about, yes, we'll make sure that the raises are there. But then it becomes a question of how many teachers would they be able to hire? And they do have more students than they used to have. Also looked at the 2008 numbers, and we've heard a lot of different things, and each supervisor in front of them should have a chart. And one is directly from the school board's information, and it lists, actually, it lists 1,661 full-time positions, .57. But I went ahead and removed some because I did not think that it was comparing apples to apples to the 2008 numbers. You'll notice that there are 1,554 in 2008 before the Great Recession. So we're right there at the same numbers from 2008 and 2018, 2019. Now, again, they have more students, they need more teachers. That makes sense. So I have said a couple of different times, I'm willing to compromise. I've talked with, I think, every single member of the board, and I'm willing to talk about whether we, how much we put away and how much we give to fund teachers to make sure that they do have enough teachers to be able to deal with the increases in students. And I know that there's been a lot of discussion about, well, when did they find out about the numbers and things along those lines? I believe each supervisor received an email from Nancy, and this is all going back to 2016, our debt capacity, June 2016, August 22nd, 2016. Again, in 2000, May of 2017, April of 2017, May of 2018. There was multiple talks about what our debt capacity was in these handouts that everyone got who came to the meetings. And so a lot of different things have gone through my head, but the focus has continued to be do the right thing. And so I'm open to discussion about a compromise on how much we should be setting aside. I do want to clarify one thing, and I mentioned in one of my earlier meetings, that email I'd received. And I was able to retrieve that email. I know that the principal wasn't able to retrieve it, but I was able to. And I'd like to read just a little bit from that March 20th why I was thinking about setting aside money. And it said, "Dear members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for considering a two-cent property tax increase for the purposes of school construction and upgrade. I believe and certainly hope you are aware that many facilities, issues related to CHS, as well as to the other needs of Christiansburg schools." And it goes on to talk about the needs that we have for our future school construction. So I think, as someone once said, I think it's a fiscally responsible thing to do to set aside more money. And I'm willing to listen to my fellow supervisors in what exact amount that might be. I would ask whether we vote on it tonight. And I like Supervisor Bones' suggestion that maybe we use the $75,000 as a matching fund for the CI, for the roof. I think that the $25,000 for the 911 center, that's a requirement. And I'm willing to also discuss other things in regards to that $492,000 that we got at the budget update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Well, I think I recall talking to Mr. Meadows about his budget when he came out with it. And I told him the part of his budget that I liked the best was when I heard one and a half cents was going to go to school capital. I thought, yes, this is what we need. We have all these overcrowded schools. The school board has talked about this in my long tenure here, a year and a half on the board. But I also heard it back in 2017, that it was very important that we get these schools repaired. So I thought that was a real good point, and I'm glad you put it in that budget. And I definitely am in favor of it. With that said, I'm also glad that a decision was made by the school board to go ahead with renovations to the three elementary schools. I scratch my head because I think, well, why wasn't this done last year? Or why weren't we talking about this last year instead of one new school that, from all accounts, I think would have upset a lot of parents to have to switch all their children around. But I think it's a great plan, and I'm definitely in favor of that. Also with the, as far as the, the numbers that we've been hearing from the school division have been confusing. And some of it is as simple as, and I believe it was back in 2017 when I first heard that number of students in Christiansburg High School. And I don't mean to beat a dead horse, Dr. Meyer, but it was one number then, and then earlier this year, it was a different number, and then here just a month ago, it was even a different number. And I don't understand how things like that happen. I don't understand why. We don't know exactly, or close enough, or if all the numbers were fairly close, that would explain it. But there's just so many items that seem to shift and change, and it was hard to get a reading on what is really needed and what we should be funding. With that said, I am flexible on what we do with the school capital money as far as maybe setting some of it aside for operations. So I'm trying to keep an open mind on that, but I still believe that the school capital fund is probably one of the most important as we go forward because of the condition of the schools. As far as the 89 cent tax rate, I'm definitely, I'd like to stick with that. I think that's, it's going to move our county forward. It's definitely going to help our schools, and I think that's the right thing to do. I would like to see money also set aside for the Christiansburg Institute. And I am definitely in favor of a condition of matching money. Because if we were to give them 75,000, I don't know what they could accomplish with it when, what they're looking at is going to be so much more money. So I would like to see that come out of the 492,000 that we, that we came up with. Another piece of that, that money, I would like to see taken away to kind of fulfill not so much a promise to our sheriff, but last year he said he needed two SROs to take care of the critical needs of the elementary schools. And we gave him one as an experiment, and that experiment has gone very well. So I'm in favor of going ahead and expanding that and giving him the second SRO for elementaries to do, to use in any way that he sees fit. I think that's about it for me.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Demos.
Sure. I might not be quite as eloquent as my colleagues were before me and maybe not speak for quite as long. First, on the tax rate, the 89 cents, I, of course, am very comfortable with maintaining the tax rate where we are, for those that have been following this board for some time. I've also, in the past, voted in favor of increasing the tax rate. My personal feelings about that are we have some significant needs, not only in our public school system, but also throughout the county. And I understand my colleagues' perspectives on being fiscally conservative, but I also personally do not feel like we are adequately meeting the needs of the county or the schools. With the penny and a half that we have currently allocated towards capital, I am perfectly fine with allocating that instead to operating the full amount. I also am realistic in understanding that that might not be the majority opinion of this board, so I'm open to compromise. We have heard a lot of information, it feels like it's been going on for months and months, but has it only been a month or two months? But we've been hearing a lot of information about the needs of the school system, the needs to adjust the teachers' salaries to maintain competitiveness in a market where we have a growing, or a decreasing number of people entering the job search to begin with. So I am fully convinced for the need for the teachers' raises, and I also am fine with moving the money, the penny and a half, fully over to do it. But as I've spoken with everybody throughout the day today, I've gotten a sense that I might need to be open to compromise, and I've committed to everybody that I am open to compromise if that's necessary. I do have some concerns. I don't think it's avoidable, the trailers at Harding Avenue Elementary School, that is in my district. I think, I share the concerns of many up here where it comes to having children in trailers in the schools. I think that it is not, not a wonderful solution. It's something that we absolutely have to do, but it's something that we need to plan to avoid in the future if possible, or plan to get those kids out of trailers as quickly as possible. I also attended the school board's hearing on their budget and heard, just, and I'd be interested to see how this progresses as we get closer to doing some capital projects in the school strands, but I did hear some concerns relative to Bellevue renovations and whether we're doing enough for that school or whether that that is sustainable long-term for Bellevue. It's just something that I think will be interesting to discuss with the school board as we're moving forward on capital projects. And then I guess, I guess that's really all of my concerns with the penny and a half and what's been going on for the last several weeks. With, with regards to the $492,000 that we discussed at our last meeting, $75,000 going to the Christiansburg Institute, that is something I am comfortable with. I'm also comfortable with the idea of a matching fund for that. We talked about this briefly at our last meeting. I went back and checked the numbers before coming tonight, and I want to make sure that if we do set that up as some form of matching fund, we're not limiting them. I think the total amount that they said they might need for the roof is 150,000. They've already raised 27,500 for the roof. So I just want to be careful if we set it up for a match, if it's, if we're asking for 100% match, we might be asking for them to surpass their goal for the roof. So just a point of conversation. Steve, I think that the idea of bringing in an additional SRO is a great idea. I certainly defer to the experts, and I consider you and our sheriff experts in that area. And then, of course, the 25,000 to the 911, which we have no real control over. We need to do that, definitely, to continue operations there. So I'm interested to see how the dialogue progresses tonight and what we're able to do if we work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
I'll be short and sweet. Of course, I support the 89 cents. We need it. And this is, this is what has occurred with the reassessment, and I'm very supportive of that. I also am very supportive of taking the one and a half cents out of the capital that was recommended for school capital and putting in their operational budget. I, I would like to see the teachers' raises be the 3.5%. I'd like to see that nurses have the VRS benefit. I, I just think it gives the school board flexibility to really do what they need to do on their side of the aisle. And just like we have flexibility on our side, I think they need flexibility on their side. So I'm very supportive of moving that to operational. And as you all know, and the sheriff knows, definitely I'm going to be supporting the idea of another SRO. And there seems to be a little bit of discussion earlier when I was talking to one of my board members. I know the school board didn't ask for a SRO officer. I think that's in the purview of the law enforcement area. And just from my experience, and I think I've said this over and over again as being elementary teacher in Blacksburg, Harding Avenue Elementary, during some very crisis situations, I just think it's just incredibly important that you have an SRO, SRO officer in the school, not running between schools when there's a traffic jam and maybe you can't get from school A to B, in the school. And I will keep bringing that up, and I'll keep fighting for it till we have one in every elementary school. I just feel very strongly about that. I support the $75,000 going in a, in a fund for the Christiansburg Institute's roof. I understand they're going to be asking other groups for money too, in other localities, so we can see how that goes. I know we have to do the $25,000 for the 911. I'm open to looking at any other ideas that our fellow board members might have about any of the rest of that money. I do feel like when I look over the emails that have been sent and when I look over the speakers that have come before us, I think that's why I can say I'm strongly supporting trying to put the one and a half cent into the operational part of the budget. You know, I don't know if there's a majority of board members that would support that or not, but I'm supportive of it.
Supervisor Bell.
I also agree and support the 89 cent tax, real estate tax rate. I am open to compromise. I do not like trailers either. I like the idea of having SROs in the, in the schools. I had hoped to have had a report out from the committee that was examining the different needs for security in our schools prior to jumping to an SRO in every school, even though I'm very supportive of it if that's what was recommended. I am very supportive of the nurses getting their VRS. I am very supportive of, first and foremost, the teachers getting a 3.5%, 3.5% raise and the hiring of 19 teachers as recommended. I believe that the additional capital of 492,000 could be used for capital improvements instead of taking that out of, instead of not giving the whole 1.5 cents for the schools to use in their operational funds. So let me say that more clearly. I would encourage us to consider using a substantial portion of the 492,000 as capital instead of taking it away from the 1.5 cents for operations for the schools to make sure that the teachers get the raises and that they can hire the extra teachers among the few other things that they were going to do that was proposed. I believe that every year we find more money after the budget is proposed in the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, I don't remember ever seeing $492,000, but I can recall at least a couple hundred thousand every year. And I would propose, I would suggest that we consider using that money for capital moving forward to build up to the extra 1.5 cents worth instead of using the 1.5 cents now and carving out even some to capital and allowing the schools to use it for operations. With regards to Christiansburg Institute, I shared my point of view. I'm very supportive of Christiansburg Institute, but some people know, but not everybody knows, that my day job is Deputy Director at Habitat for Humanity. I work for a nonprofit. And I know that there are a lot of nonprofits in Montgomery County and surround, that, that cover the New River Valley, which includes Montgomery County, that would appreciate an opportunity for the $75,000 or whatever value we put out there. So I would ask my fellow supervisors to wait on just deciding on putting money aside for Christiansburg Institute at this point in time. I would ask my fellow supervisors to wait so we could fully discuss the amount of money that we would like to provide deserving nonprofits in our area. Yes, of course, I like the idea of matching. You know, that's very common in the nonprofit area, you know, industry. So I'm going to step back and also say that I asked the question at the last meeting, how much the board has given to nonprofits, for example, the Montgomery Museum or other museums, when they were first starting? And Supervisor Biggs said $10,000 back in the 1980s. So I went on the internet, did the CPI calculator, and 10,000 back in the 1980s is equivalent to somewhere between 25, 20 to 30,000 dollars. So I would be more than happy to support, you know, a substantial amount of money going directly to the Christiansburg Institute because I, I think very highly of it. But I think that quite a bit should be open to other nonprofits. So I would ask my fellow supervisors to hold off on that. I also have a concern about the schools and their order, including Bellevue versus Harding. I would like further discussions about that. I don't think that discussion has to happen now. I think about trailers, and I think about my younger son who spent his whole middle school years, three years, in the Christiansburg school. And, you know, they had those trailers in the back. It was temporary, and I would highly encourage our school system to minimize that. There is nothing that leads me to believe that our school division doesn't have that high on their priority list to minimize the number of trailers. So they're, I believe that they're more expert than I am about trying to minimize the number of trailers that we have. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shep.
Well, it's nice to have money, isn't it? You know, I guess I'm a little different than everybody else. As far as the tax rate, when Mr. Meadows first gave us the budget and I saw what it was and some responses from other, other board members, it made me think about the last several years we've talked about tax increases and, and we've all said, and I agreed that, you know, once we did the reassessments, that was kind of the leveller for the whole In my mind, the leveling was going to be two, three, maybe four cents and not six. And that's a little, little much for me. To me, that's a six cent increase in taxes. So I'm not sure I can go along with that. I'm still thinking about it. As far as the rest of it, a couple of things. One, and just recently in the newspaper, and I know Dr. Meyer probably said it here or Mr. Kranz, that there was flexibility in their budget to make sure the teachers got the raises. And I was glad to see that in the paper in writing. And because I knew back months ago when we started talking about redoing the elementary schools in Christiansburg Strand and the high school and ways that they were trying to creatively get those done, it was a good thing. I, I looked at it as a good thing. But what scared me a little bit was, after talking about going into debt, was the Blacksburg schools that are of age and not being able to do for them after we got in debt so deep and not having as much money as we could accumulate. And I'm speaking of that one and a half cent extra on top of the two that we're already saving to address those schools, and that really bothered me. So when they came out and said that they were flexible enough to give the raises without that, if by chance we didn't give that one and a half cent to them, I kind of felt better about the whole situation. I am flexible. I think we should put it all away, but I am willing to compromise as well as some of the other supervisors. I want us to all try to be in agreement if we can. The 492,000, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement to do the 75,000 to the Christiansburg Institute as a matching situation. thousand to the Christiansburg Institute as a matching situation and then the twenty-five thousand to nine-one-one, of course. And I hadn't really thought about the extra SRO, but I would probably be okay with that out of that forty-two, four ninety-two. So I would, I think I could agree with that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I don't have a long speech like my colleagues here. I just want to say I appreciate the staff working on this budget. I know several of us have hundreds and hundreds of questions. And I know we, I want everybody to understand, each one of us sitting up here, we have a job to do, we try to do the best we can. Compromise is a big word in politics. I mean, you know it is. We have to compromise. I know some of, some people don't like to compromise on different things. They got, that's their life. I mean, that's what they look forward to is helping everybody. And I just want each one of my board members to realize how much I appreciate you and I know what you went through this week because I have. You sit up in the middle of the night wondering and figuring, well, I wish we could do this, I wish we could do that, but we can't do it all. And another thing, you know, all respect to teachers, honestly, I respect you, I really do. But when you talk about teachers' raise, and I talked to Dr. Myers about this, the school has more than teachers, they got bus drivers, custodians, and I've talked to some of them and they said that they would like to hear more about them too. Everybody in the school system deserves a raise. They honestly do. Everybody at the county side deserves a raise. And I just want everybody to know that we have set up, we have talked on the phone, we have talked in person about this budget. I told some of my colleagues today, I think this was the roughest budget I've had since I've been here. And I think it's because we've got more money. I think it is. And we see so many things that we can do. Each one of us has something that we want to do, but we realize we can't do it all. We can't do it all. But at the end of it, I want to tell the staff how much I appreciate them, the school board, I appreciate you, Dr. Myers, Tommy, I appreciate everything you do, and I do appreciate the couple of meetings that we had. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Chair and Board Members, the first item of new business this evening is a resolution setting the real estate tax rate and other property taxes for the fiscal year 2020. You have a resolution before you that has a blank for the real estate tax rate. So at this point, Mr. Chair, if there's a motion in a second for that resolution and as a part of that motion, they need to state what the proposed tax rate would be, the real estate tax.
Is there a motion?
I'm moved. I would recommend that we establish a real estate tax rate of eighty-nine cents.
I'd second that. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Wazikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bev?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Abstained. Abstained.
Abstained. Cherokee?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
All right. Mr. Chair and Board Members, the next item under new business is a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Based on the resolution you just adopted, establishing a real estate tax rate of eighty-nine cents, that means that the number for the budget is two hundred one million, five hundred six thousand, sixty-one dollars. Now, this resolution is simply to adopt the full amount of the budget as I just mentioned. I know there's been discussion about various pieces, parts of that, and I know one of the big parts of the discussion has been related to whether the penny and a half, one and a half cents that was recommended in the proposed budget for capital, whether or not that gets shifted into operations. So it, once there's a motion in a second for the total budget amount, I'm sure that'll be something the board wants to further discuss. And staff can help answer some of the numbers questions if there's any numbers that come up during that discussion.
Is there a motion? Make a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Wazikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bev?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Cherokee?
Aye.
Settled.
Further discussion about? Further discussion about the budget? Supervisor Biggs?
Can we make, well, I don't know about, I guess, discussion, but I guess what I'm interested in is finding out if there is support to move the penny and a half from the, the capital to the operations. Do I need to make a motion to do that or, I guess I can make a motion, we can vote it up or down. All right, I'll make a motion that we move the one and a half pennies from the capital, the school capital into operational.
I second.
Is there, were you hoping for discussion?
Yeah, like, you know, I want to put it on the floor so people can discuss or then we can vote it up or down.
You, Sarah, I don't know if you want me to go first, you want to go on, Darryl, that's fine. You, when I've been working my way through this thing, I've been thinking a little bit along the lines of what Sarah talked about. I would like just to spell out a lot of things tonight because we've all been doing a lot of work. And so nailing down the resource officers, that sixty-two thousand, two hundred dollars, if I remember my budget numbers right. But I don't believe I could support setting aside the full one point two million dollars, but I could agree to set aside a portion of that into the operations. And I'm willing to discuss about that and then I'm willing to talk about the other additional funds depending on how much we put in. But I really do, my goal, obviously I'm not running again, was to try to leave this county better than I found it. And by putting away more money, it will be helping future boards, you guys, in the years to come, where you won't have to face what I did in my first year, which was a twelve cent tax increase. And I didn't get to vote on whether we were going to build those buildings. I only, the only choice I had was voting on that tax increase because the bills were there. So I'm hoping to try to help the next supervisors. So I can't support the full amount, but I can support a portion.
I can't support the full amount going to the operations. At our joint meeting, we talked about three schools that need work in Christiansburg. And then on top of that, we were told, oh yeah, there's two more in Blacksburg that'll have to be repaired after this. We were also told that the, the school division has come up with a plan to make it work on the two cents. I didn't see that plan. I know what was presented, but I didn't see details of how that was going to get worked out. And until I know that that's going to work, I think that we're going to need more money put into that capital fund, but I am willing to compromise on that. But we need to be doing something. I know it's been said many times, boards of the past have never planned for the future and I don't want to be a board like that. I want to plan for the future. The raises are in, they're taken care of, so we need to think about the schools and getting them finished. So there's no way that I can support the full amount.
Vice Chair DeMott?
Sure. I can support the full amount, the full penny and a half being moved to operations. I have no trouble voting in favor of that. And while I say that, I completely respect the opinions of my colleagues as well and the desire to plan for capital in the Christiansburg Strand and also in the Blacksburg Strand. So while I do plan on voting in favor of moving a penny and a half, I'm glad to hear that there's also some room for compromise from my colleagues. So I guess that's all I have to say about it right now.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I put it out there so you know I support it, but you also know, and I think the people that know me know that two years ago when I proposed the two cent increase in taxes to go specifically to the Christiansburg Strand schools, I'm very supportive of capital, I know. And I also know that over time, because of the different things that have happened in the school system and with schools, that the operational side of the budget has been affected in a way that employees, and that's all school employees, because you know what? Every employee in the school system is teacher. Every single one of them. Bus driver, cafeteria worker, custodian, all, all are teachers. So I think that it's time to really, you know, push it forward on the operational part of the budget. And then, as you've heard me say over and over again, I'm looking forward to maybe having an opening here where we can really do some strategic planning for capital on both sides, county and schools.
Supervisor Bond? I'd like my fellow supervisors to work with me and go through a calculation, starting with the four hundred and ninety-two thousand that was in addition to the budget that was proposed. So if we take out sixty-two thousand for an SRO.
Sixty-two thousand, two hundred.
Okay, I'm just rounding it.
Okay.
So that at least we can kind of get to the same place. And the twenty-five thousand for the nine-one-one that's required. That brings us down to four oh five. If everybody's in agreement to have Christiansburg Institute get seventy-five thousand or something like that, and again, I would ask that we put that money aside and open it up to other nonprofits. Not that Christiansburg Institute wouldn't get any money. I would support them getting some money, but I think it's more fair for nonprofits to have an opportunity for that money than just one. So from four oh five minus seventy-five would get us down to three thirty. I would suggest that three hundred and thirty thousand be the beginning of our capital, additional capital. That would be approximately point four cents. And if we think that every year we at least get a couple hundred thousand in extra monies that we can spend above the proposed budget, every year we would probably add another quarter of a cent and we would get to one and a half cents within the next four years. I'm confident in that. I would ask that we consider moving forward with Supervisor Biggs' proposal and having the one point five cents go to the schools' operational fund, especially for the teachers' raises and the additional teachers as proposed, because we can consider the extra monies that is available to go to the capital funds, to start building our capital funds. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
Right up front, I'll say I, I can't go along with the one and a half cent, give them the whole thing. I spoke to Dr. Meyer on the phone after we played phone tag a couple of times, and I told him on the phone that I really appreciate them willing to compromise. And with that being said, I'm willing to compromise, but... And I did want to make one comment about what Supervisor Bond said about the seventy-five thousand to Christiansburg Institute. I'm not sure, but the reason they need that is they don't have a roof. And that's kind of an emergency to them, unlike probably some of the others, but that's all I have.
Well, some of the nonprofit, we, two point three million dollars a year. That's what we give out. Well, any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Can I ask a question? Can I make a statement, just further discussion?
Yeah.
So that two point three million dollars, half a million of it is for the ACE program. I mean, there are some seriously big chunks that make up that two point three million dollars. So saying that it all goes to nonprofits, when I would think that the general public feels that nonprofits wouldn't have included the ACE program among the other big ticket items because there's quite, there's some other big ticket items in that category. So I would beg for my fellow supervisors to reconsider, am I wrong? Okay, okay. To reconsider what that two point three million dollars really is. And the types of nonprofits that I'm talking about for that seventy-five thousand dollars are the ones that are only getting five thousand or ten thousand a year. That's not very much. And that's why I brought up, you know, what did the Montgomery Museum get in nineteen eighty? Oh, they got ten thousand dollars. Well, that's worth about thirty thousand dollars in today's dollars. That's pretty substantial compared to the five or ten that everybody else is getting, you know? So I think that's where I'm coming from, just so that you have a better understanding of how the numbers make sense to me.
And Chair King, may I respond a little bit? I, I can't remember the exact dollar figure, but it would have been about seven years ago the museum needed a new roof. And we chipped in more than the five thousand. I can't remember exactly how much it was. All right, at least that's what I believe we did. And, you know, when you're on the board, only eight years, but sometimes you forget some of those things that happened in the first couple of years. But, so we have at times when there's been a nonprofit that has had a major need, like a new roof, we have stepped up.
What staff was trying to point out to me is including the ACE program, it's two point, I got another, it's two point seven to, total to nonprofits, including ACE and two point two without ACE, right? Thank you.
Just one, I, I think Supervisor Bond brings up an interesting idea and it might be something for a later discussion or an extended work session, but built into the budget is thirty-six thousand dollars of, at the board's discretion, money to be able to award for various causes. I mean, it's not totally illogical to think we could host some sort of grant process using that thirty-six thousand dollars.
Well, that is a good point because there was previous discussion about only RRV, but in that budget amount you just approved, as Vice Chair DeMott said, there's thirty-six thousand dollars set aside so you can revisit that issue, should you desire to do that for them or any other agency that may have asked for additional funds.
Right. And so I, to the point, I completely understand it. However, I do think the Christiansburg Institute is in an emergency situation and because of that and because if, if the emergency isn't resolved quickly, we could completely lose all of the building and all of the structure forever. I do think that we should strongly consider setting aside that money for the Christiansburg Institute and then also looking at that thirty-six thousand dollars and seeing what kind of options we have for how to use that money. Not necessarily this evening, not resolving it tonight because it's a new thing for us to discuss, but at least having a discussion going on.
I would agree with that. And the Christiansburg Institute, you've got to remember the historical value of that in regards to, it's such an invaluable asset to this county, the history of it, and then I think once it's restored, it's going to bring people in, you know? So that's another, another thing to sort of think about.
May I add something? Two, two main things. Of the two point seven million dollars, three hundred and thirty thousand go to New River Valley Detention Home. Hundred and seventy-two thousand goes to New River Valley Community Services. These are pages two fifty and thereabouts. These are pages 250 and thereabouts. 810,000 goes to the New River Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority. 500,000 goes to the ACE program. 97,000 goes to VPI Cooperative Extension Services. 72,000 goes to onward NRV. 60,000 goes to Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facility Authority and participating in the New River Valley Commerce Park. So just those alone probably make up more than 80% of that 2.7 or even, I'm sorry, 2.3 million if we take away the ACE. I'm sure what I just mentioned makes up at least 80% of that 2.3 million dollars. So if we could set aside the 75,000 plus the 36,000, I don't know, is that what you said, Supervisor Demott's 36?
Yeah.
To be considered, because I know of several nonprofits in this area that have critical needs, and that would bring economic development to this county. As well, maybe, maybe not. But until we give the nonprofits a chance to pose their case, I don't think we should earmark the money. Again, I think very highly of the Christiansburg Institute, and there's no reason why I wouldn't support money going to them. But I just know a little bit about the nonprofit world here in this county, and I would ask my fellow supervisors to hold off designating any of that money until we decide how to move forward. So, and I forget what the other thing was, so. I think that was both. That's all I have.
Well, if you remember the last meeting, I asked County Administrator if we could have extended work session and talk about this. I think it needs to be, I'm all for the institute, the 75,000 dollars to, if they can raise the rest of it. But I think we need to have a long discussion before we start giving taxpayers' money away. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Demott?
Can we just, before we call the roll, remind what we're voting on, because it's been a while since the motion came?
We're voting on...
Well, I mean, I know what we're voting on, but I just want to make sure.
Well, the motion was to take the one and a half cent that was recommended to put in school capital, to switch it over to the operational budget of the schools.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Rizikowski?
No.
Chair King?
No.
Four ayes, three ayes.
Is there another motion?
I would like to make a counter motion to that, or a motion, that we take one cent of the one and a half cents and give that to the School Division for Operations, that we also take the 492,000 and we deduct the three items, the 62.2 for the SRO, the 75,000 for Christiansburg Institute, and also the monies that we owe to the 911 Authority. And I would like to set aside the remainder of that to be discussed later at a work session to find out what we want to do with that.
Did anybody second that?
I wanted to make sure, can I ask, to make sure I understand your motion before I second it? So you're asking to set aside the one, to move one cent over to Operations, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and then 75,000 for Christiansburg Institute, 25,000 for the 911 Center, 62.2 for a school resource officer, put the other 300,000 aside to discuss that, and then the other half a cent, the 400,000, would be set aside for future school capital, is that?
Yes, that is correct. And I appreciate you bringing that up, because I did leave that out.
All right, I would second that motion.
And I've got some numbers. I'm going to look at everybody sitting at the table just to make sure. Don't roll your eyes, Angie, I can do numbers. The total amount of the additional funding is 492,480. I'm trying to be exact. 62,200 is what I've heard requested for the SRO position, 75,000 requested for Christiansburg Institute roof. The amount for the 911 Authority is 25,987. If you subtract those three items from the 492,480, that leaves 329,293 dollars. I told you I can do numbers. Okay, so that's the exact numbers that are in that motion, I believe.
And in that motion, the 329,293 would be set aside for a future work session?
Special contingencies, yes. For what?
A future work session for discussion.
I got a question about that, too. So in that case, then Sarah could bring back up her discussion then about nonprofits at that time, if she wanted to, right?
In the work session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But may I add to that? I'm going to vote no to that. I don't think you seconded it yet.
I did.
You did? Okay, I'm going to vote no, and I would ask my fellow supervisors to vote no, because I would prefer to take that 75,000 out and leave it in the 329. You know, just leave that out, and we can decide that when we determine what we want to do with the 329,000. So that would end up being, give me a second. I would really appreciate it if my fellow supervisors were patient enough to pull out the 75,000 that is proposed to be earmarked to Christiansburg Institute, so that that can be discussed at a later time. Because they don't actually even know how much they need. The engineer has not done their analysis. If it comes back to be less, if it comes back to be more, I think it's worth waiting until we get the information to determine how much we want to give to them, and determine how we want to potentially assist other nonprofits and their economic development opportunities. So I would ask my fellow supervisors to vote no for this proposal, so that we can take out that 75,000 and decide on it later.
Chair King, I wouldn't mind amending my motion a little bit on that. I don't know if it would satisfy Supervisor Bond, because what I would suggest is that we do set it aside with the remainder until such a time that matching funds would come forward, but from what I'm understanding, you don't, you're not on board with that either. You would rather...
I like the idea of matching funds. There's no question about that.
Right, but you want more information.
I would like more information, as well as an opportunity for other, for us to consider other nonprofits that may have just as much or more economic opportunity and historical value. I don't know what those are, because they have not come before the board, and it's worth seeing if there are any out there. So earmarking them, this 75,000 specifically for Christiansburg Institute, I would prefer us not to do that at this time. If it ends up being that way, I'm all for it. I just am very concerned that Christiansburg Institute had the great opportunity to sit before us right before we were going to make a decision, and all of a sudden we had 492,000 dollars found, and no other nonprofits had the opportunity to do that. So.
Chair King?
Yes, sir.
A couple of things. The CI has been making presentations to me every single year that I've been on the board, and the roof is, in my mind, a major issue. And I apologize, and I would take that as a friendly amendment since I seconded it. I thought that we were voting as it'd be a matching fund, not that we're just simply handing over the 75, but they're going to have to raise 75,000 dollars. If they've raised 27 so far, they've got some money, but I was looking at it being matching funds, not just a blanket 75.
Yeah, I'd be willing to make that.
Could I make a recommendation that we split the difference and go 37 and a half thousand, write the second, matching funds with the Christiansburg Institute, and the other 37 and a half thousand that we put aside for other nonprofits? I have been approached, I have been approached by Christiansburg Institute also. I thank the world of them. I just don't think that we're making, giving, I don't think that we're giving our county the opportunity to do all of the best things that it can do at this moment in time. And I think that, I'm sure other nonprofits have come to you to talk to you about opportunities. If they thought that they could get 75,000 dollars even to match, I'm sure nonprofits would come, but they've only considered that they'd be getting five or 10,000 a year, which is totally different than 75,000 for a nonprofit. It's life-changing, and it will be life-changing for Christiansburg Institute, but it would be life-changing for other nonprofits, too. So I would, I would ask that my fellow supervisors don't get stuck on the 75,000 with Christiansburg Institute, because we don't know how much they're going to need.
Chair King?
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend my motion to say that the 75,000 needs to be a matching, at the very least.
And as a point of order, I would agree to that amendment, since I'm the one who seconded it.
So I have a question about, so then would the 75,000, Steve, be like in a separate fund for CI?
Yeah, I would think it would have to be separate, held until...
It'll be held in special contingencies, designated for CI.
And just to clarify, make it very clear, because we're talking about it being a matching fund, the donations that they've already raised towards the roof, looking at my motion and second, would that be considered part of the match?
Yes, if they're raising money now, and they've been, I know that they're going to Christiansburg, I know they're going to Radford.
And Blacksburg.
Or Blacksburg.
Yeah.
I'm wide open to that matching fund. It's a match for the roof.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I don't want to, again, like I said, I don't want to put them in a position where we're asking for them to match it and raise beyond what they need in the first place. And to Supervisor Bond's point, I understand what you're saying. I think that we really should, I mean, we have 36,000 in contingencies anyways, and plus, we're now talking about having a work session to discuss 329,293 dollars, which I think gives us the opportunity to consider several nonprofits under that umbrella. I feel committed to the Christiansburg Institute, one, because of the historical significance, and also, two, because if it doesn't progress quickly, then there will be nothing to fix, because it will rot away.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
An alternative suggestion, that we don't count the money that they've already raised, because they didn't know that they would get a matching fund, okay? So all money from this point forward would be matched, dollar for dollar, up to 75,000, but not to exceed the expense of the roof. Does that make sense? So if the engineer comes back and says the roof really only needs 120,000 of them, then they only need to raise 60, they only need 60,000 of our own money to raise the additional Because I think that the previous money that they've raised went into some of their operations already.
No, they have 27,500 in their roof fund.
Okay.
So that money is set aside.
So again, I would ask if it would be okay to, not to exceed the expense of the roof and not to count the previous 27,000. Am I saying that clearly enough?
Yes, I hear what you're saying.
So if it goes up to 75,000, dollar for dollar, I'm okay with that, but I would ask that we don't, we don't count that first 27,000.
That's what it's in the bank for, isn't it?
I would not agree to that amendment. I don't know what, you made my...
I didn't make one. I already made my amendment.
Okay, all right, okay. I guess, we don't have to spend this money now.
No.
Right. And there will be further discussion, as you know, to any and all ideas that we all might have, because if you really look through the section, other agencies, there's a lot in there that we actually morally need to do, that provides services for people, and that's my opinion. But I understand what you're saying about getting a little competition going with the nonprofits, I get that, you know? Like, we give 5,000 dollars to the Rosa Parks Playground. Why do we do that? Because they came a long time ago and they asked, and we did it, you know? So I know, and I don't know really what happened this year as far as people coming and asking, you know, the county administrator for money, but I think it's worthy of a discussion, Sarah, I really do, so. But I'm in support of what's being proposed now.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So during the expected work, extended work session, when we review that 2.7 million dollars, that's still not going to change anything in what is proposed right at this moment. Everything that is in the budget book is going to be fully funded.
Yes.
In addition to 75,000. So we're not going to find money until next fiscal year, other than this 36,000 that is available.
And if the board wants to use the 329.
And in the 330 that...
Yeah, yeah, we have that flexibility this time.
Mr. Chair, just to make sure that everybody's got the motion, what I heard was that of that penny and a half that was proposed to go to capital, that one cent of that penny and a half go to operations for the schools, which is 844,609. The half cent that would remain for capital for schools is 422,305. Then of the 492,480 and additional revenues that we've discussed, 62,200 would be put in special contingencies for the SRO position. Once that information's brought forward, then that would be appropriated for that. 75,000 would be put in special contingencies, based on the motion, for Christiansburg Institute. That would be appropriated at such time the board directs us to move forward, once a match has been received in total for that. And then 25,987 would be added to the funding for the 911 Authority per their budget amendment request. So that would leave an unallocated amount of 329,293, which would also be put in special contingencies for the board to determine use at a later date. That's it. Did I get that right?
Yep.
Any more questions? I got one. Has the superintendent, anybody, asked for that SRO option?
No, thank you.
No.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
The, from what I understand, the School Division would not request an SRO, because they believe that that should be part of our budget.
Of course, Chair.
I think I have that right. I think I have that right. I may have phrased it incorrectly.
But it's really coming from our discussion with the sheriff last year.
Yeah, the sheriff.
He had two positions that he felt were needed immediately, and we only gave him one of those positions to see how that would work out. In his report this year with the SRO, it seemed to go very well. And he still has some schools that he is concerned about as a law enforcement official of this county. And I feel like this fulfills his... And takes care of what he feels are the security needs for those elementary schools. And that's why I'm proposing that.
Well, I would just chip in that I see it as law enforcement, the sheriff, the safety of all citizens, including our children, versus the school system is the education of the children. But what's really sort of neat to me is, you know, I said everyone's a teacher. So are those SRO officers when they get in the school. So you know I'm going to support it, but I understand if someone else can't support it, so, yeah.
Just where I'm coming from is the school superintendent, I'll be informed so he can make where he needs one of them. I mean, superintendent knows where he needs them, where he don't. That's where I'm coming. I'm not saying I'm against it.
Yeah.
I just think they need to be involved in the decision.
So hopefully they be talking to each other?
Should have already. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Ben?
I would like to make a comment. I am going to say yes to this, but I am disappointed about the nonprofit option of holding out to make the decision.
So you want that to be part of the record?
Yes, please. Yes.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
A couple of things. I would ask that the email that I read earlier become part of the record. I would also ask that the handouts that were provided by Nancy become part of our record in the minutes, and I would vote aye.
Mr. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sarah?
I know, I'd like to say this before we disperse. I know every one of us didn't get what we wanted, but I think we've done the best we could with what we had. And I appreciate each and every one of you. Like I said earlier, I know you set up a night because I had. I don't think Craig lost no sleep. But, and last, I want to tell the staff how much I do appreciate it and the school staff how much I appreciate what they've done. I know they spent a lot of long hours on this. With that being said...
Can I second that?
Yeah. With that being said, make adjourn.